May the Ames City Council for Tuesday, September 16th to order. And we have two items on the agenda. First is an item under consent. Any questions for staff on this item tonight? Hearing and seeing none, they entertain motion authorize the mayor to sign a certificate of consistency.
So moved.
Thank you. Does pay the motion please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, move on to item number two. Resolution calling for election on proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement and borrow money thereunder for Fire Station Number Two relocation. Steve?
Thank you. We appreciate you giving us opportunity and direction to move ahead with this particular project. What we're trying to do today is really, at the end of the day, to pass a resolution to place this item before the voters in November. And there'll be a resolution we want you to adopt that authorizes us to issue bonds to a maximum amount. Before we get there, we've got to provide you with a little bit of information. So we're going to talk about square footage of the building, which usually leads to the cost. Why we have the square footage? How it compares to some of our other fire stations? Why we arrived at the needs for that? The location, so people understand the location of it. We're going to talk about also the cost of the overall project and a lot of other information that the fire department has put together. So we've never presented specifics for you. Now I want to emphasize all along, we're going to talk about estimates. We're talking about estimates of costs, right? We're talking about estimates of square footage. We don't have our actual design and our architects here today because quite frankly, after this, we're setting the maximum amount we can issue. Then we're going to start working on the details of the project based on this overall framework, this concept. But obviously, the numbers may change. The costs may go up or down. We'll get more specific here, okay? So we hope you don't get too much into the detail of the project itself. We're only trying to come up with a conceptual framework by which our consultant could give us a number, a maximum number that we think we can, if we pass that referendum, we'll be able to come within that number. So let's always remember that estimates, the project could change after we hire someone to actually do the detailed design work, okay? So you can interrupt us as we go along. This is going to be free flowing, we'll be as transparent as we can. We're going to also give you an estimate of what we think the cost, the properties impact, property tax impact would be. And we'll talk about that, the procedures that'll get us to the bond referendum. And then Susan will talk about our public education campaign that we're going to unleash if you let us move ahead today. So I want to start out, and again, we'll all probably pitch as we go, but the chief will lead you through a very extensive exciting presentation for this new fire station.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I just can't thank you guys enough for inviting us back tonight, giving up another Tuesday night to hear about Fire Station Number Two, how excited we are. And I want to thank all the staffs for their time. And we've had a team that's worked to put this all together back at the fire station. I'm sure they're watching right now or at home. That have been instrumental in helping us make sure that we get the right size, right fit. And I really thought they'd done a great job bringing our values to life through this process. With fiscal stewardship and teamwork, I mean, they've just done an outstanding job. So I hope you're as excited as I am tonight to see Fire Station Number Two and what the team's been working on. And a special thanks to Deputy Chief Tapper, Deputy Chief Hackett, who've just poured hours and hours into this. I believe Chief Tapper fell asleep last night with the laptop. It shows up maybe in PowerPoint, so a lot of work has gone into this, years and years of actual work with the last few months being really intense. So get moving forward. One thing I just want to point out, and you'll see on the slide, it's going to follow along with the Council Action Form. But I want to explain to you why this is a smart investment now and into the future. And the first thing that we want to look at is just that faster emergency response time citywide, just not the district, to the entire city. We're looking at 120 more calls that we're able to reach within five minutes than we were able to reach previously by relocating the station a little over a mile away, five minutes away from its current location at Welch to State Avenue. When you look at our 2040 plan, we're able to reach over 300 more calls just by moving that station out west. So as we look forward, this station's going to be there for the next 50 years. My job is to make sure that station's set up to serve the community as we continue to grow. And this location will allow us to do that. Reduce traffic conflict in Campus Town. If you've been out on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, you know how busy it can get. And maybe this will remind you. Here's a picture, this was from a couple of weeks ago on Saturday night following the Iowa-Iowa State game. This was constant for a few hours. We had PD out there, our crews, to get the apparatus out. Obviously, you can imagine trying to back that, an engine into the apparatus bay there. It gets pretty scary. We have staff out, we have an NSOG that requires any time we back up, we have staff behind the apparatus for safety. But the pedestrians out there, sometimes we've had them hitch a ride on the back and we don't find out until they get down to Lincoln Way. We get them off for their safety and for our safety. This night, they actually had to pull the engine out onto Welch. Then the firefighters got on the engine to head off to the call because we had to move people away so we could safely do that. That evening, we also talked about relocating the engine and rescue company to the intermodal facility, which we've had to do in the past when that area's been overrun by people out there having a good time. Let's talk about another great feature, why it's an investment, is there's no cost for the land. We have a great partnership and we are very fortunate that ISU President Winterstein has expressed the city staff's willingness to support a long-term lease for a site on university property at no cost to our residents. I don't know how many times our architect has reminded us of that, even our bond attorney as we spoke to them, that it doesn't get much better when it comes to land and the agreement that we have with Iowa State at no cost. Modern efficiency opportunity with Welch Station, that was built in 1966. It was designed to have one big bunk room where everyone slept together. Same way with the locker and shower room, the way it was designed. ADA was not considered when that station was built. And you think about 1966 efficiencies that were built in with the windows, doors, insulation, all those things. The station, we've held off on a few maintenance items, knowing that one day we're going to be able to move that station. But it's showing its age for sure for a 1966 station. I commend the crews, they've done a good job maintaining what we have. They take a lot of pride when they bring people in to show them. So they don't want things in disarray. They do a great job making sure that it's presentable to the public as much as possible. Another reason why this is a smart investment now and in the future is the redevelopment opportunities on Welch Avenue if we relocate the station. It adds a taxpayer to the tax roll. It's a new development opportunity, perhaps housing, a business. It brings more people down to the Welch Avenue for the existing businesses. So just a great opportunity and there's been a lot of interest. In fact, I have a list of people in my book here that have reached out to me over the years and said, hey, when you get ready to sell that station, make sure you give me a call. And I think here's just a reminder and overview of where it's located. At the intersection of Welch and Chamberlain, a great location, a great lot and a great opportunity for somebody that's looking to invest in that area. Another reason why this is a great investment in the future is the sale revenue could be used to actually offset the debt service costs. We're not incorporating that into what we're asking the public to pay because we don't know. What we do know is that right now, we have an appraisal, RFP, that went out that actually closed today at 5:00. And over the next four weeks, we will have an appraiser onboard to give us an appraisal of Fire Station Number Two and what we could expect if we do go out to sell that. One thing I think that's really important to point out to council and our listeners is that in conversations with President Winterstein, ISU intends to reinvest the 50% of their proceeds that the contract lays out that they would be entitled to when we sell Fire Station Number Two. They've committed to reinvest those in a new Fire Station Number Two. Once again, our architect and bond attorney just complimented the city's town and gown relationship with Iowa State and how rare this is to have an opportunity for free land and then for the university to reinvest money back into another station.
Rich, could you stand it just for a moment? So ideally, we would go forward, assuming the community passes the bond, we would start the process then of construction. And then subsequently, the property is sold. Would those dollars then immediately then just go into repaying the bond? Is that how that would work?
When we receive, if we receive the sale, revenue for the sale of the property?
Correct. Just trying to understand the sequence.
It's our recommendation, you could use anything you want, any way you want to use those funds. We'd recommend that you put it in the debt service fund and therefore, the finance director could earmark those to reduce your annual debt service. It's about $800 and something thousand for the project we have. We're estimating for the project we're asking you to support. That's a year. So we can use annually that amount, we can help reduce the debt service.
Would it be, I apologize, debt service generally or specifically for the new Fire Station?
Well, it will have the same impact, if you will, but weaken earmark it for the debt service for the fire project itself.
That would be more of a decision for Corey.
Well, it's not a decision for Corey, but it's how you want to apply it. I think that's the right way to do it, to reduce that.
Okay, thanks.
So while we're paused here, I just am wondering, how many ADA accommodations do we routinely have with the fire department? Because my first thought was, wow, we've got firefighters who need ADA accommodation. And I could think of some instances, but do we have many firefighters who have had to take advantage of that in the past?
We've had reasonable accommodations that we've made working with Bill Walton. But more importantly, it's the visitors that come in and visit us. And so that's where we want to make sure that we're ADA compliant.
That makes sense.
One thing we're excited about with relocating a fire station, there's no additional cost for personnel or apparatus. And we know that from our operational standpoint, personnel make up 90, a little over 92% of our operating budget. And apparatus costs, they're not needed for the station, which is a huge savings for our customers and allow us to keep that, the cost of a new station down low. Staff has done an excellent job as well identifying existing equipment such as workout rooms, some bedroom furnishing, some laundry equipment, storage. Anything that we can move to a new station that's going to save us. So they've identified over $172,000 worth of existing items that we could take to the new station to help reduce our fixtures, furniture and equipment costs. It's a great job to the team. Let's talk a little bit about where. So right now, you can see a map, we're divided up here, on the left, the red, that's Fire Station Number Two's district. And here, we've identified, working with Iowa State University, a few years ago, we had land at State and Arbor. We found out that land wasn't going to be buildable as easy as we thought. We went back to Iowa State and working with Kendall Lampke and their team there, Randy Latrell, identified a piece of land on the west side of State Avenue. So this is actually located at 601 is the address. It's a 29-acre parcel. It's currently owned by Iowa State University. And what we're looking for them, are looking for with them is a 52-year lease on the property with two years being billed time. You can see, yeah, I'll give you a better picture here. So here's zoomed in, kind of what the site plan might look like. This shows you the shared use path that's on the north side of the road. We would hug the southeast corner of the lot. Should there be any future opportunities on this 29-acre lot to the west that the council wants to explore later, we would make sure that, you know, we're taking up a small portion of that should anything ever happen. The specifics of the lease agreement are being finalized as we speak. And we'll need final approval from the state of Iowa Board of Regents. And I just want to make it clear to council, that's not expected to go onto a vote for the Board of Regents until after the November election vote.
Any questions about that? Understand what we're saying?
Let's talk a little bit about sizing. So when we first started out, you're going to see four columns. Let me bring up my highlighter here. My laser pointer. So in this first column, you have new station number two, the original design. This is working with the architect when we went through programming, identifying needs. They came back, we worked through different spaces and they said, hey, you need 14,810 square foot to accomplish, to meet your needs for a station now and a station 50 years from now. We worked with our team and we met and we did a lot of valued engineering. We tried to right-size this and so we were able to get this, the square footage down in column number two that you see here, down to 12,925 square foot, about 13% reduction, working with the architect and our team. So knowing that we're working with 12,925, we thought it'd be helpful for council to see, well, how does that compare to existing fire stations? Station Number Two, built in 1966, was not comparable. So we went with our newest station, which was Station Three, built in 2001. You can see that that station has 7,492 square foot. That's a difference of 5,433. So your question may be, Rich, where's that 4,033 square foot? Tell me how you need that. And that's what we want to do today is just show you a little bit about why that square footage is needed. Basically in four different categories, which I'll talk about briefly. But I'm so proud of our team that I kind of wanted to share with you briefly how they did this reduction process of right-sizing the station, doing some value engineering, because I think they did an outstanding job. And I think this next graph or picture kind of illustrates where we started from. And then as we worked with the architect and the team in the city manager's office, how we got down to the 12,925 square foot. So let's talk a little bit about those key differences, that 5,433 square foot. They're really broken down into four different categories. We have ADA requirements, we have net zero-ready features. We also have the fourth apparatus bay, which we've increased the depth to accommodate apparatus. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then also some operational improvements that we've found since building Station Number Three in 2001 that would better meet the fire service needs today. So let's talk a little bit about those. So this is your first view of the floor plan. I know you've seen it in your packet, but we wanted to point out some of those square footage differences. And we also want to note, make the council aware too, that we, there's a lot of things where we're very similar to Station Number Three. The bedroom size is almost identical to Station Number Three. The office spaces, same as Station Number Three. We tried to minimize areas that didn't need to grow for no reason at all. Everything had to have a need, a function over form when we worked with our team and right-sized this. So the yellow really shows the additional ADA. In the kitchen, there's a separate sink that's wheelchair accessible, that will be different. And then the bathrooms, to make sure that we have space in there. We also have net zero-ready features. Here you can see the blue highlighted areas. This is additional square footage over Station Number Three, that 5,433 that we're looking at. This is the additional space to go net zero with mechanical, electrical and then in the geothermal room. Next, I want to highlight the apparatus bay, the fourth bay, which is very important for us. That allows us to get an apparatus that's currently stored out at the water tower in the fire station and also a couple of trailers that are stored outdoors. I'll talk a little bit more about that. But here, we've increased the square footage by, the truck bay alone was 2,163 square foot to go double deep and to have that extra fourth bay. The last area that I want to talk about was the operational improvements. These are areas that when you look to build a fire station, that you want to make sure that you incorporate in any future fire station design. One is adequate space for your crews to work out. We do have a physical fitness standard and expectation in our organization, although it's not written. We do every year have different assessments that our crews run through, whether it's the entrance exam, whether it's doing, what is the oxygen one they're getting ready to do? BO2 max in body testing. We provide our crews with a lot of opportunities to stay fit. And one thing that we live our values, that we model away is making sure that we have a workout room that allows them to get together and work out as a team. The nice thing here is we're moving all that equipment over from Station Two into this existing space. We also have decon bathrooms in there. This allows you after a fire to actually get cleaned up, to get those carcinogens off your body, shower to go into a clean side of the fire station. So really how we have this set up is we consider over here, this is the dirty side. When you look at carcinogen reduction planning, this over here is exposed to the elements, it's exposed to fire carcinogens. Down here, we have what we call two decon bathrooms. So you're able to enter in through these facilities, decon yourself, get clean and then you're able to go on the living quarters over here and not take any of the contaminants from the dirty, what we call the hot zone, into the cold zone over here. We also, one of those things as part of our carcinogen reduction plan is a gear room that has its own ventilation and is sealed. We don't have that in any of the three fire stations now. We know that our turnout gear, when we go into a fire, it absorbs a lot of those carcinogens and then it off gases later on. Being able to isolate that gear when it's not being used by the crews will be extremely beneficial for us to make sure that we reduce our exposure to carcinogens. We also added an IT room in here, that was talking with our IT manager on their recommendation for best practices. And in the past, we've put those in mechanical or electrical rooms. There's some interference that can take place in there and there's also security concerns that they have. That's why you see the IT room added on there to that space. Now here gives you kind of an overview of that 5,433 additional square foot that we have that's larger than Station Three and the rationale, how we got to that point. I want to focus in just a little bit about the apparatus bay, because I think this is really important. There's a lot of square footage there that we're adding. It's needed space, not for storage, but for operations, operational efficiency for longevity of equipment. Here you can see our mobile command trailer that we have, as well as our fire prevention trailer, which we have a new one that was paid by, for a grant that will be coming at the end of this year. We would like to store those indoors as well and actually use them to keep our command trailer up to date with software, make sure it's functional, getting checked. Right now, it's currently stored outdoors, exposed to the elements. And so when you have an emergency, it's not a, hey, Steve, I'll get that to you in a few hours. I got to do some updates on the computers, make sure everything's good with it, it's, we need it now. Same way with the fire prevention trailer, we have a great operational opportunity of when we bring the public in and do station tours, which happens frequently, this trailer will be able to be set up indoors and we can run tours through that fire prevention trailer, which provide all hazards awareness, from weather to turning off gas outdoors to carbon dioxide, to how to use a fire extinguisher. And so we feel like that's a great opportunity for us to bring the public in instead of us always taking the trailer out, which we'll still do, but to have this set up all the time and have tour groups go through is invaluable. It'll be a great opportunity for us. Not to mention, we have a reserve apparatus that's currently stored underneath the water tower. I believe the crew went out today, Tom, and checked on it. And it takes us a few hours if we were to have a working structure fire now. We bring that reserve apparatus forward to serve the rest of the city. It would take a few hours to get that, to get all the equipment from the warehouse, get it back on that engine and get it into service in a reasonable amount of time. And part of that stuff, part of the equipment is actually stored at the warehouse that we would need to get and actually put on the apparatus. So trying to articulate the importance of this square footage and why it's needed, it's not a want, it's a need to make sure that we're maintaining our apparatus and meeting the expectations that the public has that when you call, we come.
So Chief, does the team at Fire Station Number Two, if we build this wonderful facility, then take on the maintenance of the reserve engine?
They would, yep. So, and I wanted to find maintenance just a little bit. We have a great fleet services that Corey oversees and directs. They would, it'd be the day-to-day. So those vehicles, including the trailers, would be checked every day. And then on Saturdays, they would have all the equipment taken off, make sure that anything that has a battery or a motor is ran and is in proper working function. And then once a month, have an extensive go-through, especially on the trailers. And that's not happening right now with the reserve and the two trailers.
Have you gotten the refurbished ladder truck back?
We have, yes.
And where is that? Is that at Station One?
That's stored at Station Number Three, is located at Station Number Three.
Oh, the refurbished and the tower are both at Station?
Yes, yep.
So you don't have any additional equipment that needs to be housed that were being refurbished or aren't refurbished? Re-refurbished?
No, not this time. Nope, nope. It's just the other reserve apparatus that we have that's at the one.
So once this is done, any new apparatus will just be retired versus being refurbished and having to be stored someplace else? I'm just trying to anticipate.
Correct.
If you're trying to plan for housing it, that in a few years, oh, we're storing something else out at the water tower?
We generally will drop off the oldest or the apparatus that has the most mechanical problems. So as we get new apparatus, we will still, part of our CIP coming up when we purchase Station Two, excuse me, Engine Two, will refurbish that engine. But Engine Four, the ones that's currently at the water tower, then we'll look to sell that one after we get the refurbished engine back.
Isn't there additional space here too at the back of the bays that do not have the trailers? If we needed to store something else, I don't know what that would be, but?
Yeah, I think a great example would be our partnership with Mary Greeley. They have a location out west, should that facility be compromised or they're doing renovations, there would be an opportunity for us to partner here to actually operate an ambulance that Mary Greeley would operate, but out of this facility by having a fourth bay in there.
But there's a purpose for all the space behind those apparatuses, right?
It'd be used for training. Yep, training, absolutely.
And checking equipment, is that right?
Checking equipment, when we have tour groups, we usually send them, assemble them in an open area and we'll do gear demonstrations and fire extinguisher training, all those opportunities there in that open space.
Point is, is that you want to reserve that as open space, not try and have another piece of equipment stored behind there? Is that correct or is that?
Correct. The way you see the layout right now for the apparatus bay is highlighting the two apparatus, Rescue Two and Engine Two, that respond out of that station a majority of the time. So we'd want them to be able to have the capability to pull through the fire station. That's why you're seeing it in this configuration right now, is assuming that that's a normal daily operation is how we'd have this set up. And then here's just the plan, overall plan for you to see. Let's talk a little bit about projected costs. This is the same information you have in your packet. Wanted to break this down in really three different categories. We have the construction costs up top, the building itself. We do have a 5% contingency that we built into there as well as a mezzanine. We've found some operational efficiency opportunities with equipment being stored out at the warehouse with the training props that we don't have for confined space, that we're able to use, take advantage of some square footers that's going to be there. We're able to spend a little bit of money and actually make it operational for confined space training to get equipment that's stored out at the warehouse into the fire station so that when it comes to getting an apparatus in service, that equipment's there as well as any training equipment that we have at the warehouse. The next section, the net zero-ready upgrades. One thing I'll point out is the increased square footage for the mechanical and electrical. If you recall, when we talked about that 14,810 square foot, this is 810 square foot that you're seeing. That's the price for that square footage, is the 472, 230. And then down below, the owner provided services. So we have our engineering fees, we have connections FFNE, which I'll point out and commend the team. $88,000 for FFNE, we're bringing over $172,000 worth of existing equipment. No operation, additional staffing, our apparatus. So to have that at $88,000, kudos to the team, they did an outstanding job. And then project management on there for a total of the 10.4 million.
Chief, in the building construction costs, is there anything for estimate contingency included in that or not?
We did not, no. There's, this is straight from our architect and that was not recommended to include that at this phase in the process.
So usually at this point, an estimate contingency and an owner's contingency is included because you're not really, you don't have all the specifics, you know, in hand. I understand that the architect didn't recommend that. However, what happens, you'll be locked into the $7 million to build a new station.
No, you're locked into the 10.5.
No, you're, well...
You're going to be authorized to issue up to $10 million to equip, construct. So you can, there's flexibility among those categories. It's the bottom line, you're locked in.
Okay. So, but you are locked into the bottom line. Yeah, but I, but all those, I mean, councils already say that, said they want net zero. So on that zero, there's no flexibility in that. And I'm just trying to say, that's their estimate, it's 1.2 million. So unless you go ahead and take that out, I'm just trying to make sure that you have enough money in the bond issue, to make sure that if the project comes in over budget...
That's the risk all the time.
You're not basically saying, okay, we've got to do some serious value engineering.
That's why you hire these consultants, you hope they're conserving their numbers, but they may not be. I understand that. But this, every city faces this, that you get some consultants knows that we're going to have a maximum amount based on this. And we could be wrong, and we could come in a lot cheaper when we actually design it. So you just wanted to put more in a contingency? Is that what you want to raise it?
No, I, I'm just trying to, if we are wanting, this is a support for the project, not against the...
No, I understand.
It's just trying to make sure that if their estimate is incorrect...
Could be.
There's really no, you're going to have to cut something else out of one of those categories, essentially, in order to stay below, because the fees, material testing, all those. When I looked at, I thought that all that was really, you know, reasonable, but what's missing was usually you have an estimate contingency put in there. And I didn't know if that was put into the, by the architect, and the answer is no, he did not.
Well, but there is also no accounting for the revenue we get with the current fire station.
That's true.
And so that, in my mind, that kind of offsets. And I mean, there's a timing issue there a little bit, but I would imagine that will, you know, so that maybe would, that kind of offset that concern to me, is that we have, that's also not.
Which is a...
Brown would say you don't use it for debt service necessarily. You can use that cash to pay the overage in the project itself.
Except you won't have sold the fire station yet, when you make the decision on awarding the contract. You're basically going to have...
You have to borrow from yourself.
Right. What that says is, you're going to assume that the appraisal is correct, and you'll be able to sell it.
I mean, it's only worth what people pay for. You're right, not what the assessed value says.
Just, just the point being is, you got a cap.
No, I understand. You've been with them.
Yeah, part of the reason why we selected BRW Architects is they've built nearly 400 fire stations across the US. They are newer to the Midwest, we will say that. And that was part of our interview process, when we went through with different architects. But we felt very comfortable with their cost estimate and talking with them, with the same concerns that you have, Mayor, that we, when we, when we go to do this, we want to do it right, and we only get one shot. So let's make sure that we have enough, but not, not fluff in there too, right?
Right. And not arguing to try and add fluff, it's just more or less, just trying to make sure that what you envision and all the hard work you've done, okay, we're going to have to, we're going to trim something because you don't have enough. Now, I agree with Bronwyn, that if you can get some extra money and use that for debt service, and that's why I think it's wise to not say we're going to pledge that to reduce the debt.
Right.
But...
You're right. I keep saying these are estimates, and despite all good intention, it could come in higher. Who knows what's going to happen to the economy, or tariffs, or whatever. I can't tell you that. But what do you want to do? You want to, we can increase the contingencies, put any place. You want to put another $500,000, a million, 300,000? I couldn't tell you what to do. But it is going to be hard to come up with deducts or, you know, alternates, because it's not something we could pick out and say, we want to cut. I mean, you could cut the net zero concept, right? You could cut out a bay, maybe. We don't want to do that, don't get me wrong. But it's not easy in some, some projects, you can definitely know, these are nice things to have, but we can live without it. They've done the value engineering. We've gotten down, I think, to what we think is needed for modern fire stations, to support our, not only our people, but respond to fires and emergencies. So it's going to be hard, and it could be over. But I can't tell you what to put in there right now.
So I would just say is that, on the basis our community supports this, which it certainly hoped that, not going to advocate one way or the other, the point is, on the basis they support it, that you protect that owner and construction contingency, and that's not anyone, the architect says, oh, I hear some contingency I can use to put in the project. Uh-uh. That's our contingency for during construction, and/or things that maybe we want to add during construction. It's not something we can go ahead and use, you know, during the design phase.
I heard you say that.
My questions, I want to dovetail with the mayor. And so I appreciate the background of BRW. That certainly gives a lot of credibility, because they've done this drill many times. I'd like to you to speak, Chief, about BRW's assessment of the net zero ready upgrades. So the other components are a little easier to price out, but we've gone through a recent experience with the recent geothermal and things that we did at the Baker subdivision. And frankly, they, things turn out very differently than we anticipated. And so are we as confident in the 1.245 million for that as we are with the others? Is there a sense in which we should look at more of a range for those?
In talking with BRW and the principal for this, Ray Holliday, he feels like that number's the upper part of where we're at, the 1.2 that we're seeing. And that's working with the Schemmer Engineering, they're out of Omaha, they have an office in Des Moines. They've, they're the mechanical, civil, electrical engineers that have helped put together all this pricing. And talks with the principal architect for this, he feels very comfortable with that number. I also add that they don't do net zero fire stations a lot. This, they've had a couple that they've got to this point, but that's, they have an engineer that is specialized in net zero, to be able to help them work through that with geothermal. So for full transparency, BRW will say that they, they don't do a lot of net zero work.
Well, maybe there's a reason for that. And, you know, I appreciate the work that your team has done to make sacrifices in the size and functionality to try to get this, this project down, size-wise and cost-wise. And then the council has gone back and layered on top of it, as much as 1.2, and I'm going to be skeptical on this, after the Baker subdivision. But an additional 1.2 million that we're asking to layer on top of this. So the Baker subdivision situation has colored my view of our ability to make estimates on these things. So those are, that's, those are concerns I have going into that. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Next, let's move on to the property tax implication.
Yeah. So this is important to us, because I know people want to know, how is it going to impact my property taxes? But it is very difficult to project. We're projecting into next year. The finance director prepared these, this information. I have a lot of confidence in it, but it's a projection. Unfortunately, he's out of town tonight, so he couldn't be here with us. So you have to make some assumptions, and a lot of it's based on the current assessed values, let's say, the current rollback. I'm putting all these caveats in there, right? I'm warning you. Doesn't take into account what the state government will do to us next year. Okay, we're planning that. But the best estimate we can have for the incremental, separating the cost of the fire station alone, his projection is, and it's a projection, that the tax rate, and by the way, when I say tax rate, I want everybody to understand, this is the city's portion of your property tax rate, which is about 30% of your total property tax bill, 33%. The rate may have to increase as much as 23 cents per $1,000 of taxable value. And this is for residential property I'm talking about, okay? And what does that mean? People don't care about rates, they want to know what's that dollar amount. It's about $11 per year, right, per every $100,000 of assessed valuation. Understand? So you multiply that by four, if you have a $400,000 home, et cetera. We try to break it down like we do for the budget for you. So that's about a 2.1% increase. If you isolate alone, the increase in the property taxes, estimated, very broad estimation, about 2.1%. But I always get nervous about this, because after we have a property, we have a bond issue like this, people come and will say, hey, you told it was only going to be 2.1%, and you went up something higher. I want everybody to understand, we have a normal budget that increases. The operating costs, and all of our capital improvements, operating costs for police, fire, library, parks, and recreation. If you went back, and we trend for the last four or five years, our increase in those other items were about 3.9%. So I just want you to know, you got to combine them. I want the citizens to know, if this passes, it could be as much as 6% more, all right? 6% more. Now that gets it up to $30, $33, I believe, 33, $31, excuse me, would be the overall increase for every $100,000. Understand that? I want the public to understand that.
Yeah, I'd like to go through that one more time, Steve, both for residential and commercial.
Yeah.
And just because we're focused on the bond issue, could you break this out, that your projection, and I've got the material that I've been through as well, but because of the bond, what's the dollar amount per $100,000?
Right there.
For, just, I just, would you be clear on this?
What, say again, I'm sorry.
So the dollar amount per $100,000, just for, just for the fire station, that's the $11 per $100,000?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for commercial?
Well, if you look down, excuse me, it's, you got it? Just for the, just for the...
Fire station.
You got it there, 2, what is it, 267?
Okay, thanks.
Now, you got to add, remember, you got to add the...
That's also, according to that, that's both of them there. Excuse me. Did you want to, did you want to separate out just the fire station?
Correct.
It's $97 for $500,000.
For $500,000.
For $500,000, excuse me.
19.4 for every $100,000.
Right. The total would be the 267, which is again, 6%. These are estimates, again, I'm nervous, because we're trying to project next year. I don't know right now what the assessed value is. I wish we were doing this after we were into the budget, we have more information, but I don't have the total information. But it's pretty conservative. I think that's what we've been doing, in operating costs, about 3.9%. Now, the state might tell us, quite frankly, we can't even do that amount. So that'll be less property tax burden on the, on the homeowner. It's a lot of unknowns out there.
Steve, how come the, the language that might appear on the ballot uses $10.89 when we're getting information says $11? Now, I know this says approximately that, but why are we being more specific on the ballot language itself?
That was through our bond attorney, that's what they, I guess they want us to put that amount. We're trying to round off to give relative terms.
Well, I'm glad to see it's lower on the referendum, but I was just curious.
Yeah. We didn't put all the sense in. Now, again, when we hire a consultant, and it may not be this, the next step would be hire an engineer and architect who referred to actually design the building. They will help us, if we can, reduce the costs even further. We're not going to look to reduce square footage, but it could be the exterior application. Maybe there's a more cost-effective way to handle it, that's, that was included in the, in this conceptual phrase. So we'll work on that too, right? So those numbers could change. We don't want them to go higher, but we'll work to keep them lower, without cutting out any of the square footage. Then we'll bring it back to you, and then you'll, you'll have to see what the estimate is. Hopefully, it's not going to be over the $10.005, right? We'll have to think of ways we can increase the revenue for it, or cut space. Everybody okay with that? I don't, it may change those numbers, but in relative terms, that's about the magnitude of it. Okay, Tim, you all right with that?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Um, let's talk about the procedure and process, because it's something we don't do every day. So let's talk a little bit, there's two required notifications that need to go out. One by Story County Auditor, that's a mailed notice. So as part of the election process, the county commissioner of elections is required to mail notices to each, each registered voter within the city, not less than 10 days, nor more than 20 days prior to the election. Then we have the City of Ames requirement, the second notice, and that's a publication into a local newspaper. And that in needs to include the meeting minutes, the resolution that was adopted, as well as the annual property tax impact per $100,000, which we just discussed a little bit, is set at $11. Their notices, no less than four days, nor more than 20 days prior to the election. Those requirements are set forth by the state law. We've worked with the city clerk's office, and we have a good idea on what needs to be mailed out, and what that would look like.
You're talking about the cost?
Yeah. We know right now, it was...
It was $41,000.
$41,000, a little over $41,000. Renee told me, I apologize, I did not write it down exactly.
It's about $21,000.
Yeah, $21,000 in cost to mail out a $0.51 postcard.
Renee, why don't you tell them about the other part of the election, the total picture of elections, then, right? The net effect of this.
With the special, because we measured for $10,000 for the election this year, and we split that cost with the new, so they ran a stack.
For some of that, so we'll be able to add that $10,000 to this estimated $21,000, but we'll get about $4,800 back. So kind of a net of $26,000 for the election.
So we'll have to take general fund savings. We only budgeted, how much was it then?
20.
Pardon me?
We only budgeted for $10,000.
$10,000.
Yeah, for this election.
So we'll have to take out of the general fund and balance when we do our estimate mid-year, we'll show you that. Out of the general fund to pay for that. Any questions on that? A little bit different nowadays.
All right, next I'm going to turn it over to Susan. Susan and her team have been great on helping us develop a marketing campaign. We know we have a short window to keep the public engaged. And so I'll turn it over to Susan to talk a little bit about our plan.
Could we say educational, not marketing?
Our community engagement, information sharing.
Thank you, yeah, because, you know...
Yeah, absolutely. This is an education campaign, and everything we do is based on a foundation of getting information to residents. That is what the Communication Outreach Office is all about. And with this project, it will be no different. We're starting out, we've already started some of the, those outreach efforts. We've created a website landing page, cityofames.org/firestation, where you can see some basic information about Fire Station Number Two. We have a City Side article going out in November, simply talking about moving a fire station off Welch Avenue onto State, which we've, which we've talked about. No timeline on there. Again, so this is what we're working on. For any good outreach campaign, you have to focus on two things, the audience and the message. And so we have several messages. Rich went over them when we first started. We talk about public safety, we talk about the ISU partnership, and we talk about the future of the Welch Avenue property and the redevelopment opportunities. We have a good story, and our audience is pretty clearly defined as well. It is the entire citizenry. So it is everybody in Ames. We do talk a little bit about niche audiences, perhaps those who are closer to this fire station, both a fire station that you're vacating, and a fire station that you're moving to. You want to be good neighbors on both sides. So you might tier those audiences just a little bit, but in general, this is education for everyone. And the great thing is, is that we have a lot of tools, and we've been experimenting with those tools. We're wrapping up right now a Ames Animal Shelter Outreach Campaign. As that one wraps up, we've learned a lot from some of the tools we've used, some special e-newsletters, doing different kinds of posts on social media, doing an alpha and a beta post to see which one is the most effective. It was a little bit different, because that was a fundraising campaign, and this is really education and outreach. But as you develop any good campaign, you put in times to sit and look, and get the feedback, and see if you're on message, if your message is hitting correctly, and if you need to tweak it, and then you do it again. And so we've identified many, many opportunities to do outreach. We're lucky, in the sense that we already have one of the big firefighting outreach events coming up in October with the Fire Open House, that we have Fire Prevention Month and Fire Safety Week coming up in October. And Rich and his team have done a lot of the work already. So to be honest, when we're out there talking about the fire station, we're not recreating the wheel. People have driven past it, they understand what's happening, and they, they react. People have driven past it, they understand what's happening, and, um, they, uh, they react. So, um, some things we have planned would be open houses at Fire Station Two, doing speaking engagements to whoever asks. That's already part of what, um, Rich and his team do now. We have social media, established social media that we'll be using, including Ames Fire, which has its own accounts. Uh, we have a video right now up on our website that talks a little bit about, um, the project. We have, uh, posters, media outreach, and of course, we're hoping to tap in and leverage some of the communication tools that Iowa State has. And they have been good partners with us in the past. It's a compressed timeframe, I'm very aware of that. And I have to say, it came up at the last meeting, it's not always a bad thing to have a compressed timeframe. Sometimes when things are drawn out, and really drawn out, you lose your audience, and you, you lose your momentum. So hitting it hard and fast isn't always a bad thing. And so we feel really confident we can move forward on this and reach people. Of course, they need to be paying attention, and that's always a problem, is catching people's attention in a world that's increasingly complex with a lot of, um, other messages out there.
So I have a question, Susan.
Sure.
In our, in our education campaign, are we gonna talk about the 1.245 million dollars for the net zero aspect of the project? Or is that something that we're not gonna talk about in our education campaign?
We are always transparent in what we do, and we talk about everything. So when we talk about dollars, we'll explain all the dollars. How detailed people wanna get into that is really, um, we, we, we give the entire story, and then sometimes people wanna drill down, some people wanna stay at a high level. But, Tim, absolutely, we give every, and for, all information goes out.
And, and we have to have a passage rate of what percent?
Do you have any, um, engagements or special outreach planned for the Iowa State students?
That is a good question. We were hoping that Iowa State would help us with that, but apparently we have outreach tomorrow.
And then we also work with Cassandra, and, um, uh, the Fair Housing Act will be set up there as well to answer any questions that I, students may have.
Yeah. And will there be anything, uh, specific to the community where, uh, the new fire station will, will be? That's south of Creekside, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we have to identify both areas, both, um, the campus town business, they need to be aware of what's happening, and also looking at the neighborhoods. They're not as close on state, but, uh, Rich has already made a lot of friends when they were looking at a different location.
Yeah, that's, uh, when we were looking at state in Arbor, uh, was invited to a few of the events with the Franklin Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
So I put at your, um, chairs, just, uh, just an example of some of the stuff that we are already sending out. This piece was really kinda handy to have, um, an advertisement of the open house, but on the back, "Education" about Fire Station Number Two. And so this is the kinda thing that, as we get more information, as, as the information is updated, if we need to put additional things on here, we will make sure that they get out there, and those things are updated.
Will these be available for the students tomorrow?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah, Chief Camper, I, uh, was at Brookside Park for the 100th celebration, uh, Saturday morning. How many people did, were you?
I actually talked to 96 adults individually about this project, and I was amazed at how many people said, "Oh, I've heard about that," or, "Oh, I know a little bit about that." So that was great to hear that it wasn't just a, a new surprise to them. Um, and then there were 56 children that I got to talk to. So then I got to talk a little bit more about the open house. So it was so great when a family came up that I had a message for the adults and the children as well.
Susan, I mentioned before that we get our City Side after the first of the month in the utility bill, sometimes it's the third, fourth, fifth of the month. Is there any way to try and avoid that? Because you, I anticipate you could have some people not very happy if they say, "I just, I just got the City Side." Informing that the bond issue's coming up, and it's already passed.
Yeah, and of course, the City Side doesn't mention a, a bond issue. It simply talks about, um, the project itself. The delay in City Side has been noted, and we are moving to a different vendor. I don't know that that will happen by this time. Again, we're the last, you and I have talked, we're the last people who get our bills, um, which means it is one batch, which, which, which is not great. But it does mean the majority of people will have gotten it before. Um, and we're gonna work on getting that fixed, so people are gonna get their City Sides on time. I, I continue to get comments about that, and it is, um, it, it just seems to be a, a US mailed delay.
So you're saying that the City Side would just talk about the project, or what will be?
Yep, it, it's very similar to vocabulary in the back here. It sort of talks about a move, can, a consideration of a move, where that move would be. And it does say that to fund, uh, this project, a bond referendum would be needed. So I, I, I don't want to assume anything. So we are very clear in our early education that, um, this is in the works, but we don't have the timeframe yet.
And remind me, we are allowed to educate, but not lobby for.
Right.
And I guess, how does that, you know, what are the limits there in terms of like, when we're? Yeah, he's still, he's back. Just remind us, yeah, what we're allowed to say and not say, or, you know, phrases we should avoid, or?
The Iowa Code section, uh, says that, uh, that the "Public monies may not be expended to expressly advocate for the passage or defeat of a ballot issue." So as long as you're just educating and not expressly advocating, um, then it's okay. And, you know, Susan and I, Susan's well aware of this, and she and I have talked about this in the past with other bond issues. So it, it's, uh, you know, educating, hey, this is on the ballot and stuff, but expressly advocating is saying, hey, please vote for it.
And is that only when it comes to public monies spent for marketing materials? Like, if we were to verbally advocate for, does that count as public money spent on that purpose?
Uh, no, it does not. It's a good question, and I will read you from the next, after the Iowa Code section talks about you can't spend public money on it, it says, "This section shall not be construed to limit the freedom of speech of officials or employees of the state, or officials or employees of a governing body of a county, city, or other political subdivision. This section shall not be construed, construed to prohibit the state or a governing body of a political subdivision of the state from expressing an opinion on a ballot issue through the passage of a resolution or proclamation."
Okay.
So council can pass a proclamation in favor of it. Um, and, you know, that's expressly allowed. You, um, and the council members all have, you know, freedom of speech. You can go out and advocate on your own time, all you want for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Anything else?
So we talk a lot about saying, "Vote" on November 4th, but we don't say how to vote.
Sure.
But we could, and we wouldn't be.
We could.
Well, you could. I can't, I can't put that on here. So when I say, "Be sure to vote November 4th," we don't say how.
Thank you.
Anything else, Susan?
Yep.
Other questions for Susan? Anything else?
Yeah. The, the last thing I'll show you, and I just wanna remind council and our viewers that these are preliminary drawings, um, and plans used to create a budget estimate for a bond referendum. Uh, final design and materials represented here tonight may change. So I, I'm always hesitant to show these, because they, they look great. But I also think it's fair to, to share with, um, with our community what, what we've been working on, and I know the team is, is proud of what they've been working on. So I, I just wanted to share, it's, it's in your pack as well, just a few of the different renderings. Uh, we do have a memorial out front that's for one of our fallen firefighters, Steve Boozer, that working with the union, um, that we wanna make sure that we have, um, at this location. We've, we've been waiting for that day to be able to, to, to have a memorial, and so we were able to incorporate it into the station design. And then you can just see the, the four different sides there. And with that.
Okay, so finally, there's three options we have available for you.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. It maybe is a question for Mark, but maybe not. So just remind us again, if the bond were to fail in November, then would we have to make changes to the bond if we bring it back the following time? Or would we be able to bring back the same proposal? Just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Yep, there's nothing, you can bring back the same proposal, uh, a year from now. There's nothing in the Iowa Code that says that you, uh, have to make changes to it to, to bring it back again. And, you know, since we can only do these now in November, um, it, it's just, you know, it would be a year from now, and if you did it again, and, uh, it could be the exact same proposal. And I, I looked in the Iowa Code, and, you know, this issue came up at the last council meeting. I was sitting, looking through the Iowa Code on my phone, and then couldn't find anything. I researched Iowa Code the next day, and then I, then I, I came to that conclusion, but I also checked with our bond counsel, who told me the same thing.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And for those watching, I wanna emphasize, the state law has changed, so we can only vote on these once a year in November. In prior years, there might be a rec election that we had, special elections that weren't necessarily on November, but the law has changed, so has to be tied to the November election. So we have three alternatives for you. One is to approve a resolution we'll talk about, to place on a referendum the November 25th ballot, an amount of $10,500,000, and it's for the construction. You'll see staff, uh, and, um, other items, for the construction of a relocated fire station, number two. Now, the other option is to keep you with, maybe with the mayor was asking, that you place it on the November ballot, an amount different from the $10,500,000. That could be either more or less, right? Then the last option is to actually wait until, uh, November 26th. Now, we're recommending, I guess it's, again, it's always, it's always a balance here. You could put $20 million in, but you don't wanna overdo it, you put too much in. There's a risk in all of these. If you rely on the consultants, which I think the team does, then I feel strongly we should approve alternative number one, put on the ballot immediately, pass this resolution, and just for the public to understand, the actual wording on the ballot will be, "Shall the City of Ames in Story County, Iowa, enter into a loan agreement and issue general obligation bonds in the amount not exceeding $10,500,000 for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new municipal fire station as a replacement for the existing fire station number two." Now, the resolution you passed is a lot more words, that's why we have bond attorneys to tell us what to put on them, but the actual ballot wording is what I just read to you. So we hope you gave a comprehensive look at what we're talking about, why it's important, why it's justified to move along with this project, and I recommend, uh, alternative number one. Do you have any other questions before we hold on, or not hold on the resolution?
So are we, um, voting to approve the language in this resolution?
Yes, this resolution, we'll put that on the ballot with this wording, in that amount.
Can we get some commas added?
Well, we have.
Constructing, furnishing, and equipping, we need at least one more comma in there.
I think that is, that came specifically from the bond counsel.
Yeah, we don't write these, they give the bond attorney.
It's not clear. Constructing, furnishing is not the same as constructing, furnishing, et cetera.
I can't speak for the.
I'm sure that, I'm sure that if this goes through, Renee can visit with the, and Mark can visit with the bond counsel.
The intent of the resolution.
We don't write it. Renee doesn't write it, attorney's office doesn't write it.
AI writes them.
I know I'm being very English professor here, but constructing, furnishing, sounds like you're working in a, a furniture factory.
I totally agree with Gloria. I, I, I don't think there's any problem with us adding a comma there, and I think.
All we're doing is saying, "Approve resolution."
Right.
We're not reading that resolution in the record, correct?
Well.
No.
The one we were presented with is the one we're voting on.
This is the one you're voting on, that the attorney, not the bond attorney told us, so.
We could approve it, uh, with the contingent upon, uh, grammar check.
Whatever, whatever you wanna change.
I, I'm guessing this is just a typo that they left out, the comma, and, uh, good catch, Gloria, but, you know.
She'll catch others.
Yeah, I, there's.
He read this carefully.
I don't think there's any problem in correcting that before it, you know, goes to the ballot, so.
Other questions? Sir motion?
Alternative one?
Second.
And I'd, I'd like to make a statement, Mayor, if I could. Um, I think it's important in these matters, if at all possible, to have full council support for a bond referendum. I think it communicates unanimity and, and broad support for a motion. But I'm gonna vote against this, and I wanna be really clear why. The, the work, Chief, that you and your team has done is outstanding. The challenge is what we, as a council, have done to your proposal. So we have literally, at a time of, um, a situation where we require a 60% approval, we're gonna make this project 1.245 million dollars more expensive. We are at a time of great uncertainty with respect to our, um, state budget, with respect to how taxes are handled. This is not a time, counsel, when we need to be adding this kind of expense to the project. And if you haven't heard from your constituents, they are very upset about property taxes. I don't know if you've heard that, but I hear this in stereo. So I think what the voters are expecting us to do is to, to come up with an outstanding project at a cost that is reasonable to the taxpayers. And, um, I think the 60% is gonna be very difficult, and I think it's gonna be our fault. If this doesn't pass, I think we're gonna find out that people are just ticked off that we've added all of this money to the project needlessly. So if you wanna increase the chance of this passing, pass a project that doesn't layer this extra, uh, piece to this that, um, really doesn't need to be there. We could do this project, I love everything about the project, I am so proud of the work you've done. I think the community needs to be proud of that. But I can't in good, good faith, uh, support something that I think is bad for the taxpayers.
I'm not sure what to do with that, Tim, since the council has voted for the Climate Action Plan, which calls for us to do the necessary things to bring down our, um, carbon footprint and to create a more sustainable, um, at least a more sustainable set of city buildings. And so it, that is something council has voted on, what, two years ago now? And this fits in to that plan.
Well, I, I think it's absolutely perfect that you bring up the Climate Action Plan. With the Climate Action Plan, after a couple of years of wandering in the wilderness over this, we finally came back to our senses, and we said, "We're gonna evaluate climate measures on a case-by-case basis." So it doesn't sentence us to, to load this up. We still have to apply common sense to the project. So it doesn't sentence us to adding this 1.245 million dollars. We could apply common sense, and I'm really afraid that a blind adherence to this Climate Action Plan and situation is going to have detrimental effects on passing a fire station that we all agree we need.
All right. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Corieri.
Aye.
Gertner.
Nay.
Jung.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The public will hear much more about this. We wanna educate them before the November ballot. We'll give you a lot of information, give them a lot of information to make the decision.
Thanks for all the work on this.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
All right, council comments, Gloria?
Um, I don't have any tonight.
Rowan?
Nothing for me either, I don't think, thank you.
Neither?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Amber?
Just a thank you, um, to the staff that put the 100th birthday party for Brookside in place. Outstanding event, lots of contact, we had great weather for it, and, uh, great turnout. So thanks for the work on that.
Rachel?
I would echo what Tim said, it was a great event, and, uh, just, I think it showcased the great partnership we have with Iowa State University, and, uh, was honored that Dr. Winterstein participated in that also, and, uh, so with that, entertainment motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Those in here say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.